Time to call the August meeting of Huntington Township Planning Commission Order. Minutes of the July 22 meeting for review and approval. Any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? Not entertained, a motion to accept them for record.
I'll make that.
Tom made the motion, is second to that.
I'll second.
Second tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Zoning officers.
Yeah.
Report.
I issued an occupancy permit to Jolene Pabuta Alberto at 324 Labor Camp Road. She put an addition on her existing home and it's finished. Cody Lear got a waiver at 1847 Cranberry Road to replace the existing vinyl siding on the house. It's considered a repair. I issued a permit to Bob Evans at 210 Fickett School Road. He's gonna install a new 22 kilowatt generator and an ATS, which is an automatic transfer switch. I also issued a building permit to Leon Holstetter on 1340 Wyman's Mill Road. I think that's one of the first properties in our township when you come onto Wyman's Mill Road. He's gonna move a used barn to this location, 48 by 72 feet, and the Conservation District approved that move. Judy Bany at 45 Baker Ridge Road got a waiver to replace a damaged deck. And then they issued a waiver to Nathan Davis at 107 Gun Club Road to replace a rotten deck, 10 by 12 feet. And Seth Huffman at 6145 Oxford Road got a well permit for a new well to a house that he's gonna be building at that location. That's all of that. The Miller Sports Complex is backed up for sale. The signs out front. JVI, we're gonna be looking at their land development plan that's been presented to And note on the rezoning, the supervisors turned down the petition to rezone the property at 180 South Ridge Road. Owner still intends to pursue that. Saldo revision. I'd like a motion to move it to the end of the agenda.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, but Tom seconded it. Jeff, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Gus, can we go back to the zoning issue?
Yeah.
When you say the owner intends to pursue it, what does pursue it mean once it's been turned down?
He's looking at his alternatives. I mean, he can still go to county court, but I don't think he'll do that.
He'll look at alternative.
Mm-hmm.
Uses with the same zone.
Right.
I'm just, I wanna put words in your mouth and try to figure out what you're saying.
Yeah, well, that's basically what he's looking at, if there's any other way that he can do the same thing without changing the zoning.
Okay.
Do we need, and this is just a question, do we need to keep Samwell on our agenda? Isn't it kinda dead in the water until somebody does buy it?
Well...
I'm just asking.
I guess we could take it off.
And when it's on, we shouldn't call it a sports complex? It's not zoned to be a sports complex. It isn't a sports complex. Can we just call it Samwell Building or Samwell Property or something?
Very good. Take Samwell off.
Do we need a motion to do that?
No.
No? Okay.
Is that it, Gus?
Yes, alright, that's all I've got.
Need Scott's engineer's report.
He's next.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me get him up here.
Greenbrier Road, the project is out to bid. Bids will be received at the supervisors' meeting September 12th.
Could I just say, how until 12?
Yes, to get their bids in.
Okay.
So it's come back September 12th.
Yes, okay.
And when would you expect construction to start?
The township has already purchased the structure through Co-Stars.
Okay.
So it could save, we save about four to six weeks on the lead time on that.
Okay.
So construction can start probably three or four weeks after bid opening. So first week of October they can start moving.
And how's the funding on that work? Do we pay and then we're reimbursed, or do they pay directly?
We've already received funds.
Okay, we have the money already. Good, okay. That's even better. Okay, thank you.
Nothing new on Myers Town Road, but that'll be changing soon now that I have the design done for Greenbrier. The Roadmaster gave me another project to get a permit for, the rolling road culvert Update on the saldo is ongoing.
Scott, can you tell us about the rolling road? I think that's the first time that's been on our agenda.
Chuck just gave that to me last week.
Okay.
So I'm a little fuzzy on the details yet.
So you haven't inspected it yet?
Correct.
Okay.
He contacted the Conservation District and Dan Musselman said that a permit's gonna be required, a GP permit.
Okay. Is it a major replacement, or do you not know yet?
No, it's not, it's not a big one. It's not in Greenbrier.
Okay, okay, good.
It's not a full-blown...
Gonna run out of money doing covenants.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a full-blown permit, it's just a GP.
Okay.
It's much smaller scale. And one plan is in the queue for review, and that's the JVI's land development plan. Guys, I forward the plans to everybody.
Yeah, but was that your engineer's report in that?
Maybe not.
Okay.
That came later. We got it. Gus, Gus, Anna.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Gus. It's nice to have you on the meeting. Michelle Roxy.
Planning agenda. JVI. Review. JVI review. Anyway, can you just send me that again? I don't know that I have it.
I'll send it to you.
Somebody, I don't care which.
Alright.
Can I comment on that?
That's it, then?
Yeah, that's all I have.
So we're moving the saldo down to the new, end of new business. I guess JVI's next one on the old, old business.
Well, we got Mr. Barnhart representing JVI here, and I'm gonna put the plan up on the board.
I've got a haircut. Okay. And I also have comments. Okay, she needs a doctor to back up.
Alright, Scott, you're up.
Good evening, Scott Barnhart, JVI Group. Excuse my voice, it's been a rough week. We've submitted the plan, as you're aware, and we received comments from your engineer, Scott. My engineer, Dave, has talked to Scott about those comments. I think we're pretty clear on most of them. I don't think there's anything that we can't, you know, do for you. So there's nothing that's gonna stand out there as far as something that there's an issue. We did submit our HOP plan last week. That's gonna work its way through. Usually nowadays, they take at least three submittals, so I don't expect it anytime soon. Sometime maybe late fall, early winter. As far as the major, I'm not sure if it's a major or a minor revision to the MPDES, but either way, now that we have comments back from your engineer and there's nothing grossly in error, we're gonna go ahead and get that back into the Conservation District pretty quickly. The issue is because it's MRC, a managed release concept, on the stormwater, they kicked that up to DEP. There's no choice nowadays. Trust me, I'd rather not have it that way. Last I heard, they take at least eight months to get those reviewed. So the way that I see this shaking out is that probably over the next couple, three months, we'll get everything worked out with your engineer as far as your notices are concerned. At the same time, hopefully PennDOT, that late fall, early winter, will be coming back also. The last piece of the puzzle will be that revised MPDES permit from DEP and the Conservation District. So with that being said, I think, you're on a 90-day clock here, right?
Yeah.
There's really no way I'll have everything done by, you know, November. So when the time is right, I'll give you an extension for another 90 days. That being said, we are working still on some of the interior things for the site. I've got a call in to our, one engineer to do a photometric survey so we can figure that out as far as the lights. I think that the building permit, and this is where I lose a little focus, for the proposed building, that may be working its way through, but we know that that cannot start until we get land development approval. So even though I'm out of the picture on that approval process, they kinda go hand in hand. That being said, we are finishing up the main building, I'm gonna call it the existing building, hopefully trying to get in there sooner than later, but that seems to be dragging out with some of the tradesworks and just getting everything transferred from down the street up to here. We did request, I think, one waiver to go to a final. I'm not asking for anything tonight. Let's hold on everything until next month. Let's see how some of this engineering shakes out with everything that we have to do, and then if you want, when the appropriate time, whether it's next month or the following, we'll do all the waivers at one time and we'll kinda go from there. That's kinda it in a nutshell. I don't really have a lot of answers because we're working to get some of these comments addressed at this point, but I do know, talking to Dave and with Dave talking to Scott, I don't think that there's anything that you're asking for that we can't provide for you at this point.
You started to say, Scott, we have one waiver, and then you stopped because you said we're gonna talk about all the waivers. Is there some major waiver?
No, to go to final plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, just let it go till later. Does anybody have any questions? Again, we can talk about whatever, but if we can, maybe let us work through some of these comments and get a little more finite plan, then we can kinda dig into it.
So if you could just walk us through, I know there's a lot of work being done on the existing building.
Correct.
Are you planning on moving into that relatively soon?
Correct.
Okay, do you have anybody moved into that yet?
No.
Nobody yet. And then there's a fair amount of site work going on that was conditionally approved previously. Is there anything changing on that site work at this point? Or is it what you expected to be done and what you started?
Yeah, it's gonna be what we're gonna do for the plan. And basically, the sequence would be, is to create that three-ish acre yard, we have to fill the hill in.
Yeah.
So at a certain point, we will start to fill the hill in, and again, this goes back to what we're revising with the MPDES permit and so forth. But we'll fill the hill in, and then when it gets to a certain point that we can create the yard, the land development plan is approved, we have our building plan approved, then we'll start the building in the back. But right now, we're not projecting that till the end of this year or beginning of next year.
I know you're putting a lot of fill in under that new building.
Yeah.
You have plans to do compaction testing on that fill?
Yeah, yeah.
So you can pass the building code.
GTA is doing much of that stuff, so. We'll furnish all of that stuff for you.
I knew you probably had that in.
We're not gonna put a $3 million building on something that's ex.
No.
So, yeah, but we'll give all that to Scott, yeah.
I guess saw that fill coming, you know, bringing that up to get it up to that level, and I thought, hey, this makes it.
In retrospect, I wish they would've bought a flat piece of land, but they didn't.
We have a lot of that around here.
You know, they started with 19 acres, and I'm giving them three as a yard, and they don't understand why, but I don't know what else to do. If anybody knows Harry Fox next door, I'm interested, but he's not selling cheap.
Yeah, he has a piece next...
So that's kinda it in a nutshell. Again, if you have any questions, I can surely answer it, but now it's the arduous task of over the next three, four, five, six, eight months, just working towards those approvals.
Right.
What's the low side depth of the fill going to be for the pad?
I'm sorry?
The backside depth, what's that elevation? How much fill's gonna be on the backside of this predicted pad?
The Harrisburg roadside, if you wanna call it that way, that's actually a cut.
Yeah.
Right, so we're gonna flip that to the other side. And I believe that the, I'll go by memory, the retaining wall on the Harrisburg roadside is somewhere around 13 to 15 feet tall, retaining wall. I eliminated the retaining wall down at the bottom of the property because we're gonna go with a two-in-one slope up. And as far as the actual fill, could I lean on you, Scott? Do you know what that is?
45.
45.
45 feet.
45 feet. Yeah. Okay.
That's why I said about the compaction test.
Yeah. Thankfully, we have a little bit of equipment that we can do the work ourselves. We can go a little bit slower.
Yeah, and a lot of fill, apparently.
I don't know if you watched the news lately, but yeah. That's all I'm just...
Don't wanna get into that one.
No, that's, I never knew the DEP actually calls you on the phone at 7:00 in the morning as much as I have lately, so.
Oh, gee.
Ron Ebert, yeah. But no, that's kinda it.
So what about the off, and the front building, the furniture store? You gotta be able to get that into operation?
We're hoping over the next couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
But every time I ask, they tell me a couple of weeks, and then they say, well, there's a problem with, you know, Comcast, or the computers, or this, or that. They're trying to get it up there. Baird's very, I know Baird, where we are right now. He's very nice, so he's letting us stay there. And this is kind of a big leap, you know? If you go down to our office any day of the week, there's only about 15 people in there. There's not a lot. There's really not gonna be a lot more people in this, but it's building for the future. So it's quite of an investment for that size of a building. It'll be new for us.
You're doing a nice job on the building. It's a very, I haven't seen the inside, but it's solid, it's very nice.
To me, it's keeping up with the Joneses, but...
Well, you keep it up. I don't know who the Joneses are, but you keep it up.
Yeah.
Whoever they are. It is nice. It really is.
It's getting there.
The plans that they presented seem, good quality plans.
Are you talking the building plans?
No, the land development. They are good quality plans. I've looked at them.
I use Dave up at Range End Road, that's how I bet him. And he's not as savvy as you were. He's not. I mean, we've worked here for 20 years. He's not. But he does pay attention to detail, which I like.
Yeah, they're detailed. That's why this... They are, it's a good presentation to us.
Yeah. So we'll be back next month. I've got it on the calendar. By then, I did talk to Dave, I think he's gonna get you a recent one. I don't know if it'll be in time for you to look at it again, but we'll get something back to you, and we'll be a little further down the road that we can maybe iron out some of the nitpicking things.
Yeah, we gotta get the nitpicking ones out.
There's a lot. There's a lot.
I'm not gonna pay my back taxes, so.
Oh, yeah.
Go get them.
There's back taxes on the property?
No, no, I said that.
I'm a tax collector.
Clean the grid.
He's coming up.
Oh, yeah, that.
Worse than that, that.
Yeah.
That's worse than that.
I'd rather pay your back taxes.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any other questions, anybody?
No, I have none.
Yes?
Are you finished with all the technical things? I don't wanna interrupt the technical info.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure, Mr. Barnhart, Barnhart, right? Whether you're actually with JVI or you're a real estate agent?
I'm actually both, but I'm employed by JVI.
Okay, I'd like some clarification, if you don't mind. On August 15th, Penn Live ran an article by Zach Hoops, and it indicated, the title was Contractor Behind Dirt Mountain Looming Over Steelton Cited For Environmental Violations.
Yes.
The thing was, they updated that evening to indicate, to clarify that JVI is responsible for the dump site, but not the hauling per the DEP. Jeff King had indicated at a meeting where it was, you weren't present, he indicated how messy your site up in Dillsburg was, right? He was very concerned about that. So I'm wondering, why is something like that allowed in Steelton by your company? And there's residential homes real close. The mound in the photos was taller than two-story house. It was awful.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah. I'd like to clarify, because like I said, it's...
And I'll give you an exclusive, 'cause I have not talked to the paper, and council says not to talk to the paper. JVI does not own the site in Steelton. That's Capital City Dump Site.
No, I saw that in one of the photos, and that's why I didn't understand it.
Right. That site came about in 1972 with Agnes. The city of Harrisburg dedicated that area for collection for the storm. We purchased the site roughly a year ago. For 50 years, that site operated as a fill site, predating a lot of those homes on Rower Drive. That site has been permitted properly through Dolphin County Conservation District and DEP. All of the required engineering has been done for that site. We have an approved plan. We have regular inspections from Dolphin County Conservation District and DEP for air quality. And there are a couple violations on the site, which if you are in the industry, every site out there has violations, whether it's a sock that needs to be scraped out from the rear and so forth, or so on. So all of these complaints from the residents, from the neighbors, I understand. I wouldn't wanna live there. But that being said, this site has existed for over half of a century. We followed every rule and regulation that there is. We continue to follow those rules, and we will continue to be mandated and inspected by these governing authorities.
Was the mound there for 50 years, or is that something that's just recently been created?
That is something that is only approved plans that we've been issued to install.
Because one of the things was, I was wondering how often the zoning officer has been out there to inspect the site on various days or whatever.
And we're talking to Steelton's?
No, I'm talking about, no, no, you explain that, I appreciate your...
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's keep the conversation pertaining to business in the township.
But to answer your question, I know Gus has been out to inspect it, and I've been out to inspect it. I've been out there three times. And we have expectations that JVI will follow our rules and be a good neighbor. And so far, they are following our rules.
It's just that I remembered Jeff King's...
And I had the same comment. I didn't like what I saw in Dillsburg.
Right.
And we made the point, that's not gonna be tolerated here, and we've been assured it won't be, and so far, they are following the rules. That's all we can ask, right?
Yes, I understand that. Thank you. Thank you for adding your clarification.
You got it.
Anything else, Scott? Nobody else has anything on the board?
No.
Alright, thanks, Scott.
Thanks for being here. It's good that you're here and explaining. We appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. See you soon.
Thank you, Scott.
We did talk about the rezoning on Ridge, South Ridge Road. Saldo revision's gonna go down then.
Okay, what is this 880, or is that supposed to be 180?
No, I just wanna report to you that, remember a couple months ago, I had a gentleman in here? Who proposed a large storage facility for commercial on that pointy piece of...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two roads, two roads coming together.
Right. Well, he's wrote me a letter stating that he's interested in pursuing a mini storage shed, which would be a permitted use in the commercial district. However, we have a long list of requirements, like fencing if you don't have an on-site manager. And I told him I had, I think, five or six questions that I needed answered. One of them was in regard to the state right-of-way that comes from 15 over, and he clarified that, and evidently, he's checked with PennDOT, and they say that won't impinge on that property. Though what the bottom line is, he wrote me and said that he will be applying for a variance on the...
Setback.
For the front yard setback on the, what do we call it?
South Ridge?
No, the other...
The other road?
The one that goes back to the...
Long Lane.
What's it called?
Long Lane.
Long Lane, that's it. He's gonna, his plan is to apply for a variance to, on that front yard setback, 'cause right now, he's got a 50-foot setback on both pieces sides. And if you do that, you basically negate about half the property because it's...
It's so narrow there.
It's so narrow there, so. I told him what he had to do to apply for a variance, and when I accept, receive the application and his check, then I'll schedule it.
Okay.
That'll be before the zoning hearing board.
Alright.
You'll bring it up first.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for the report.
Alright, I guess we're down to the saldo.
Well, I wanna bring up one thing first.
Alright.
Jamie, are you back there?
Yes, sir.
Alright, you want us?
Yes.
Got your five minutes.
I'll do my best. Jim Alden, three thirteen White Church Road, York Springs, Pennsylvania. I'll do, uh, I have thirty-six minutes, fifty minutes written.
Save it for the supervisors.
I will. Long story short, I'll try to get the date. Last week, I was on my couch, overwhelmed by fumes. I went across the street to the mulch folks. They didn't give me the time, I wanted them to, this is the second event. On April fifteenth, I'll, I'll go real quick. April fifteenth, I walked into my house. My house was full of toxic fumes. That day, I went over and addressed the mulch people. Tanner was there. I told him what was up. Elvin Diller, the proprietor, wasn't there. I slept on it that night. I went over to the proprietor the next day, and he knew he had done wrong, and he had brought a couple ten-wheelers in of mushroom soil, and he told me that's what we do in the country, and it sells good. With that said, I wrote him a text, and I told him to be wary of his chemicals, and how he handled his chemicals, and so on and so forth, and be a good neighbor. That was in April. He poisoned my wife. Now, on eight-twenty, I took my early morning pills, laid on my couch, and I woke in gasping breath in poison. Wanted to the thing to vomit. I go over to the plant, I said, Tanner, I want you to come smell my house. I'll be done at the end of the day. With that fury come, I make a nine-eleven call to the fire department. Now, this time, my house has been aired out a little bit. And with that said, the fire department showed up, but prior to the fire department showing up, there is a gentleman, let me find his name here. Tom Leedy, is it Leedy?
Yep.
Tom Leedy, who has worked with Adams County, and he does all the weights and measures, and collects your taxes, run people out of their house, and so on and so forth. Well, he stood there, and he took charge of this operation. I told the two firemen to take in their little thing to see if there were toxic fumes, i.e. I called Gus, because I want to purchase an air mon, I want you guys to purchase an air monitor, but now I understand that it's not a mulch operation, but a bullet department. So this fellow, Tom Leedy, stands in the driveway, and the firemen come and leave, and then they check on my wife, and they wanted me, of which I've been, I didn't do anything, but I've been sick. All right. We're sitting there, and Mr. Leedy tells me that the firehouse, or the chicken dryer down in Hillendale is on fire, has been on fire for some time, and they've been pulling out loads of chicken manure, and running them up all fifteen somewhere and plopping. So we stood in the driveway, and he insisted that it was chicken manure. And I, we smelled it, smelled it. So, I listen to Mr. Leedy, and I want to follow up, just so you know, Hillendale Farm and my involvement in life is the reason they have them chicken houses is because of Ross and his pig farm, so I'm a member of the community, been here for a long time, and I work with this community, and I've worked, and I work with the planning commission, and make our country better. With that said, I came down to the township, so, now there's, I'm skipping stuff, to hurry. I come down to the township, it was closed. I was furious, and so I attended the commissioners' meeting.
County com-
County commissioners' meeting, and I addressed them, and there's a new code word in the county for government, it's called chicken shit, it's just that, chicken shit. Know about it, Gus?
Yeah.
That was quote from, that was the answer that I got from Mr. Qual. I asked them to give me help. Where do I go to address this issue? I got a call from, oh, what the heck is this young lady's name? Bear with me, I had all, I had a whole pitch here. What's this lady's name? She works for the planning commission for the county. She's the manager of the planning commission for the county, and I was hoping you folks would know her name.
What was it, Sherry?
Sherry!
Okay.
Do you guys know Sherry?
I do.
Do you know who doesn't know Sherry? Doug Mastriano doesn't know Sherry.
Okay.
I.e., my lesson in civics, I'm in the hand of God right now. Right here, in Pennsylvania law, you people have got to help me. So, with that said, she addressed DEP, and she told me to mention these two names, Mr. Owen and Mr. Brewbaker, and there's two DEP prob, we've got a problem with pollution, when it comes to pollution, and trying to zero it down. And it's not in our township, and I hope we're friends with the next township, but we have tractor-trailers twenty-four-seven in those rudders, it's a regular holiday hotel. On top of that, we've got homeless coming in there. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. With that said, you have chicken houses that are dumping in our township, as my understanding through hearsay.
Dumping where, Ken?
He said, old fifteen across from you, we're in my driveway looking west.
Okay, so at the mulch place?
No, across Route fifteen.
Oh, across fifteen, okay, gotcha.
Okay, now, this is where we got a problem with township. I just asked Gus before we come in here, I was like, what's the use permit that EB Mulch has?
Right.
With that said, as far as the county planning commission, they refer to it as a, oh, Jamie, say it right, we're composting site.
Okay.
I want to know if we issued composting. Is it planned for a composting site? I want to know whether it's retail, whether it's manufactured, whether it's compost, and then at the same time, I haven't heard from DEP yet, at all. And in the event that it's a composting site, I went into Pennsylvania law, and composting site within three hundred feet of a home dwelling where I live needs to be approved. And I do have that law, if you need to jot it down. Two-five PA Code, two-eight-one-point-zero-two, three hundred feet of a dwelling. Now, in the event that that's a composting facility, of which it is...
You're saying they're operating as one?
Yes, and I want to shut down. Now, there's a dip, there, with that said, there's two folks of DEP that are coming with regard to this pollution. There's one that addresses diesel fuels and composting, and then there's one that addresses chickens. I'm gonna need follow-up from this team here to help me with that. And then at the same time, I'm gonna need an air monitor, if you're gonna allow him to operate, of which he should be closed down. Now, with that said, I try to handle this as a neighbor personally and privately. I'm gonna lose a whole lot of people by coming down here with what I'm saying. In the same breath, in my research of composting versus mulch, mulch turns to compost. Incorrectly manufacturing mulch can create hydrogen sulfide and acidic acids. There are two children next door to me that stand in the school bus less than fifty feet from hydrogen sulfide tomorrow morning. Now, not to make any waves on White Church Road and making the whole place a wonderful community, I had a big speech on why I come here, and why I live here, and what happened to White Church Road and my historical home, that was here when Huntington Township was founded, prior to it being the United States of America. We fought the English here. We live on a historical road here, and this township put commercial down a historical road. And I don't live in a Ziploc house, my windows is open. And as I typed to Doug Mastriano and got nowhere, that window was open and making me sick. And I'm pooping blood days waiting for this meeting. I know it's not the commissioners' meeting. I apologized for the planning meeting. I called Gus up, and I said, Gus, I'm thinking about it here, I don't want to be crying the wolf. I need me an air monitor. He said, what kind of air monitor? I was like, I don't know. How much do they cost, Jimmy? I was getting on Amazon, they cost ninety-nine dollars, they cost three thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. At the last supervisors' meeting here, you had millions of dollars. I figured you could cut out a thing, so we could track. Now, in the event that you make that a mulch property, you can't buy me out and have any kind of Huntington Township facility down there in your commercial zone, because you can't even run a track next to a mulch facility, you can't have a library next to a mulch facility, you can't have none of that in Pennsylvania state law. So with that said, I called Dr. GL, I called Gesberg Times, I addressed Horan Ecker, he told me it had nothing to do with fishing licenses. You're going to the township real good. I got nowhere with the government officials. With regard to our township going down to the commissioners' meeting, do we ever visit with these people? Where I'm going is, there's a lot of money, and everybody's quibbling over what she can get out of this town. And there's planning to be done in the county, and we've got to be good neighbors. We've got to know what the township's doing next to you when they're throwing pollution up into your neighborhood. When this township goes in there and shuts them down, I lost whoever. And I figured, and I think I told Gus I'm real good at losing people, because I stand up for myself. And this township ain't gonna poison me out of my home, that's the only thing I have. Everything. I don't know if you folks know me too well, I got cancer, fifty-nine, ate it all up, got divorced. The only thing I have in this world is the old Bostroman place that goes back to William Penn, that goes back to Wireman, that goes back to the Episcopal Church, and I'm doing my best to curate it and hang on to little pieces of this county that's beautiful. When I died, don't matter, but I'll tell you what, when I was moved in here, I walked my little girl up White Church Road to the Episcopal cemetery, and she had a crayon, and she scratched the crayon on them stones. They were standing when I moved in here. They ain't standing no more. I sent my peace.
I got a question for you. Did the fire department monitor the air at all when they were in there?
They came, yeah, they came, they came with their tool.
Yep.
And they told me to check my grill. Their tool doesn't do the ammonias.
No, it doesn't.
And the oxides.
It does propane, natural gas, and smoke.
Boom!
Yeah.
So they walked in my house, my house wasn't going to go boom, it was full of poison.
Okay. All right.
Jamie, I'll look into that.
Okay, Gus, can you, can you, what have you done at this point?
At this point, listen to him.
Okay, all right.
He invited me to talk.
Thank you. Okay.
Now, what, in speaking with Doug Mastriano...
You did speak with Doug?
No, in with his girl.
Okay.
Stay with me on this one. I'm a criminal, gotta think like a criminal. The girl tells me that there's a whole lot of complaints, there's people with body parts, piling up all kinds of chicken things. So everybody in the world's worried about drugs, this and that. So I got a barn, like, what was the bird flu down in Lancaster?
Avian bird flu.
So I got birds, a million birds that died. And I called up Elvin Diller, and I said, hey, you got some bulks to dry out these birds? Elvin goes down there and lays a big old tractor trailer loaded, shoo, soak up some birds. And that farmer says, hey, Elvin, this is all hypothetical, could you take this smell away from me? Old Elvin says, I got a big mulch machine, I'll dump that thing in there and rub it up. Ain't nobody nothing. I dated a girl in Philadelphia, opened an acre trash. She said, ever need to lose a body? And she meant it. I walked from Passaic, New Jersey, to Richmond, Virginia in my life, I've been through a lot of communities. We've got a lot to learn from Maryland as far as planning goes, they got beautiful state. Now, granted, they're commies. But I come to learn, I'm in the hand of God. In Pennsylvania, everything comes up from here. And if you're gonna act like hillbillies and say chicken shit's chicken shit, the tree's a tree, well, that's what you're gonna get. You got these politicians claiming we got a million dollars here, we got a million dollars there, we got five billion dollars there. Who in this town is getting that money? Who's joining the next guy in town and having a meeting at the county planning commission getting the money? Who's telling Doug Mastriano, we want to build covered bridges and make a wonderful place in Adams County and promote it, but we need some money? Who's doing that? Who in this room has asked anybody for outside money? To protect me, I come down here worried to hell with death about a low air filter.
We gotta get busy, people.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, next step is, you're looking into it, I, you know, they're not, my memory, they're not permitted for anything other than mulching, correct?
That's right. Mulching is considered composting, I believe, under the codes and whatever, you got to research that.
Well, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but we'll look at it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mulching does become compost, but those are two different processes.
Yeah.